I guess that means it's six thirty, so we're getting there going here. Um. Welcome to the Wednesday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two virtual meeting. On Zoom, Thurston County Planning Commission is Citizens Advisory Commission to the Board of County Commissioners on Land Use Planning Matters, such as Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, who are the final decision makers. All planning commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on these topics for which the public hearing has not been held. And you're all there. So we're calling the order, we have the sound check. So we're going to do introduction of the planning commission and we'll take a little bit longer since we do have some new ones. They'll give them an opportunity, but let's go with the old folks first. Um, I'm Jim Simmons, I represent District Three, Doug.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Scott.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Eric.
Eric Casino, District Two.
And Kevin.
Kevin Pestinger, District One.
Okay, how about you start us off, Barry? You need to unmute yourself.
I'm Barry Halverson, District Two, I live in the Elm, Washington. And I've been attending planning commission meetings for over five years in person and virtual. So I'm pretty up to speed on what you're doing and what you've been discussing. And it was suggested a couple of years ago that I submit my application, I did. And yesterday I was appointed, welcome, I'm glad to be here and glad to see you all.
Welcome, we're glad to have you, Helen.
Hello, everyone, yeah, so I'm Helen Wheatley, I'm District One. I'm currently on the Board of Supervisors of the Thurston Conservation District, I've been on that for a couple of years now. First appointed and then elected. I've lived in the county for about twenty years and raised my family here, I live in Olympia. And I spent, I've, I've been very involved in local efforts. And I'm on the Conservation District Board because of my interest in conservation in the county. And on their behalf, I serve on the Thurston Regional Planning Council Committee as well. And on that count, on that, on the TRPC's behalf, I also serve on the, as a, the representative on the Growth Management Board for the regional Puget Sound Regional Council. So I'm fairly tuned in to the issues that we're going to be looking at. And I also spent many years on the Hanford Advisory Board that meets in the tri-cities usually. And so I have a lot of experience with working on sort of very broad-based, multi-jurisdictional advisory board work. So I'm hoping that that's going to be something I can bring to the planning commission, thanks.
Absolutely, great to have you, Helen, we're looking forward to your input, Joel.
I'm Joel Hanson, I live in Tumwater, so I'm District Three. I, um, I've started on a number of boards and committees, most recently I spent the last six years on the Planning Commission for the City of Tumwater. And I'm also on the Advisory Committee for the Port of Olympia. And so I have been, have been, going from, from more specific local issues, working with the City of Olympia, working with the City of Tumwater, to thinking more regionally. And so I was approached this winter and asked if I would consider joining the County Planning Commission. And so I put in my application, here we are.
Great, welcome, nice to see you all and looking forward to your input and your participation. Okay, so moving on here, uh, did the introductions, I'm looking for a motion to, for the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of the approval of the.
Jim, I'd like to add something, though.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I'd like to have a discussion on an item to perhaps recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to add something to the docket.
Okay. We get that at the end, Doug, maybe, maybe the new, new business section. Helen, please just speak up.
Yeah, well, being new to this and not being a long time observer of the planning commission, could you just explain that a little bit more before I vote for it or against it? So it's just, it's just to add something to discuss talking about adding something to the county's docket? Or it's an item that's on the docket now?
It's, it would be an item for us to discuss to decide if we want to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that they add something to the docket. Specifically, the item is the Drainage Design and Erosion Control Manual.
Okay, I'm going to defer a little bit to Christina's, like when we present that or how do we do that, or is that even possible?
We've done it before.
I guess I would have you all make the agenda change and we can discuss if you decide to make the, add that to the, the, the agenda, then I can provide additional information if the discussion occurs.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by, with Doug's request? Does that sound appropriate?
I'll move. Seconded.
Okay, there's been a, a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda, is there any other discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Then we'll move that forward. Okay, so we're off to public communication, oh, wait, 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 sorry. I need the, an emotion to approve the meeting minutes for January fifth, two thousand twenty-two?
So move.
Seconded.
It's been approved and, the motion has been made and seconded to, for approval of the meeting minutes for January fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any deserted discussion or changes needed to that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any?
abstained, since I wasn't here.
Okay, no worries, thank you. Any, any negatives, nays? Okay, we're moving that forward, so we're on to the public communications. For. For this virtual meeting, please choose to raise your hand option if you wish to address the planning commission. The chair will promote you to a panelist when it is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you are dialing in person, number nine to raise your hand, make sure you also choose six to unmute yourself. Three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. If you have issues speaking and being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call three six zero nine seven two six seven eight five to make your public comment. Is there anybody of the attendees and the public that would like to speak, please raise your hand? I am not seeing any at this moment. Is there anybody out there in the? Looks like I got Don, you're up.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, just as a brief note, as a, as a member in waiting of the planning commission, I am tonight an observer.
Okay, Don, we, we, we got you, we know you're kind of still hanging out there and we hope you get on back with us. Thanks, Don, um, Phyllis.
Greetings, Commissioners, Phyllis Farrell, a resident of unincorporated Thurston County. And I am not going to speak on anything related to content, but I want to welcome the new commission members. Thank you for stepping up for this valuable service. I know you guys spend a lot of time in meetings, read a lot of materials, listen to a lot of staff reports. So I really thank you for your service.
Thanks, Phyllis, and we always appreciate your input.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else that would like to share with our, with the commission today? I'm not seeing anybody, one more option here, one more chance, is there anybody that would like to share with the planning commission today? Okay, not seeing any, we're moving forward. So we're on to elections, so I will turn that over to you guys that were on the little, on the committee there to see what's going on. Who wants to start that off?
Well, Scott and I got together, we, each of us have contacted the planning commission members that were seated at the time. And we basically asked three questions. The first question is, would you, do you want to serve as an officer of the planning commission? And if not, then who would you nominate for the positions of Chair and Vice Chair? And the third question is, do you have any input to the planning commission as, as far as things you would like to see changed or added to? Or just comments about how we do our business? After review of the input from each of the planning commission members, Scott and I came, would present the nomination of Commissioner Casino as Chair. And Commissioner Carmen as Vice Chair.
Thanks. I'm sorry, Scott, I talked over you.
Said so moved, make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Helen.
What's the motion?
For those two guys, Eric Casino to be the Chair of the Planet Commission and Doug to be the, the co-chair or the, not.
Are there going to be any nominations from the floor or anything like that?
We haven't gotten that far along, typically there can't, we, we, we asked in our last meeting for any, if anybody was willing. There definitely can be if, if somebody else wants to step up.
I'll step up. I'll nominate myself.
Okay.
Seconded.
Great.
As what position, Helen?
Uh. Chair.
Okay, so we have, we have two, I'm not sure how we do this voting then, this is new for me. Do we do it just with a hand raise or?
I think you have to do it with a hand raise, do it one at a time.
Okay, so is there anybody else that would like to possibly step up?
I'll nominate myself to be Vice Chair.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So let's go with the chair first, we have Eric and Helen. This just seems awkward, okay. Yeah, all those in favor of Helen as Chair, please raise your hand. Two, three.
All right.
If, if for some reason I'm doing this wrong, please say something. But then, so all those in favor of Eric Casino as Chair, please raise your hand. Okay, no, thank you guys, so thank you for stepping up, Helen. Thank you for taking over, Eric. I handle, I'll be glad to hand the gavel to you. So, so now we'll move on to Vice Chair, we have either Kevin, Kevin or Doug. So all those in favor of Doug, please raise your hand. So that's five, so, and then that's the majority right there, I believe, so. Uh, looks like Doug's the Vice Chair, so congratulations, you guys, thank you, Kevin, for stepping up. Yeah, we need an involved group, so great job. So, okay, do I hand the gavel over right now?
Jim, no. Okay, the third item, we had one more item that we, we discussed with the, the planning commission, which is, is there anything that you would change or want to add or whatnot? And, and with, and after discussion, it was felt that there was a need for at least one planning commissioner to attend Board of County Commissioner briefings on PC recommendations. Because there have been many times that Board of County Commissioners have asked, why did the planning commission do this or say that? Or have this opinion and nobody was there to answer it. And so.
Okay, I kind of divert to Christine on this, I think we went through this once before and, and we're somewhat, for lack of better words, we're somewhat shot down by staff, so I don't. Uh, Christina, your thoughts on that?
Um, so we can, um, further discuss that, but I will say that PC recommendations don't necessarily go to the Board of County Commissioners as a recommend, as a briefing recommendation. They're usually part of broader discussions or even a request for the Board of County Commissioners to move forward on a public hearing. It's something, I was not here, if the planning commission asked about this prior, I can look into that. We can internally, take a look at that and see how that might work. But again, the board meets during the day for that. There may be other avenues to provide that information to the board. Should they ask a question about planning commission recommendation? Instead of having somebody have to be there at the Board of County Commissioners to answer any questions, we might be able to find a different path forward.
Yeah, I don't think we necessarily are intending to be at the board meeting, but when they are discussing it, if they're discussing what we're, what we have put forward to them, I think it behooves us to have somebody there.
To. Christina, could you tell us if the rules of procedure for the planning commission are amendable by the planning commission? Or who set those rules up?
Yeah, those rules are set by the Board of County Commissioners and mostly tied to the ordinance. And then policy guidelines through resolution.
Our, the planning commission's rules of procedure are set by the planning commission.
I'm sorry, one more time, did I say planning commission, I meant the Board of County Commissioners.
Scott, did you believe that the, the planning commission's rules of procedures are set by the Board of County Commissioners? Or by the planning commission themselves?
They're set by the planning commission, we have, we have made changes in the past.
I, I guess my question would be, if we're asking to be, to place somebody in front of the board, that's going to be their decision, not ours.
Well, well, Jim, the only reason why I ask that is because I do know that in our rules of procedure, we have section nine, which is transmittal of reports to the Board of County Commissioners, where our rules of procedure say how we're supposed to do it. So, um, I mean, I, I, I'm not presuming that the Board of County Commissioners is going to give us a seat at the table if we tell them we want one, but I'm not sure exactly who makes those rules.
And, and I don't think it's, it's, I think it behooves us to at least make the request.
So I don't think there's any harm in making the request, I just, um, I'm, I'm not sure who exactly makes those rules. And, and even if we did make a rule that said that we can transmit our reports personally, doesn't mean that the Board of County Commissioners is going to.
Right.
Entertain us.
I would suggest that we put it on the agenda for next month or next meeting and Christina can do some research and we can look at the section nine and, and everybody can have time to think about it. And we get it, we get input and decide what to do down the road.
I think that's a good idea.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, good, thanks Doug, thanks Scott for your efforts and, and getting that going with the elections. Appreciate your efforts. So we're moving on now to item five on the agenda, the work session, habitat conservation plan. Christina, you're up.
Right, hi all. I know this is a topic that you guys had a number of years ago and those that have been following along as public. But we are very, very close to having something that's approvable by U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So we wanted to start talking about the Habitat Conservation Plan tonight with the planning commission. This is a very high-level overview of the Habitat Conservation Plan. And we'll start digging into details along with the implementing ordinance in the coming meetings. But we wanted to start the conversation and bring everybody up to speed. So I'm going to share my screen and bear with me because technology has not been my friend here as of late. All right, so you should be seeing my screen that has a pretty purple flowered background, is that what everybody is seeing?
Yes.
Thank you. So we're going to start out with a YouTube video here.
Thurston County is home to endangered species. After ten years of environmental groups petitioning for their listing, among other species, the U.S. Government added a bird, a butterfly, a frog, and a gopher to the federal endangered species list to save them from extinction. That means if you build where they live, you don't have to save the animals on your property. But by federal law, you do have to replace their habitat elsewhere. This is called mitigation. Mitigation is required because these animals don't do well when they're too close to homes and roads. To sustain their population and ensure their survival, they need prairie habitat with the right kind of food, places to cocoon, nest and tunnel, room to have their babies. They also need a little distance from predators. If you want to build where these protected animals live, you need a federal permit, a potentially long and cumbersome process. Unless you're building in unincorporated Thurston County, the county government is getting its own federal permit to make it easier for you. When you get a building permit from Thurston County, we'll look up your project location for you. And if there are endangered species, the county's habitat plan can cover your project and provide you with mitigation options. It's faster, it's friendly and it's local. And if you're issued a building permit by Thurston County Government, you can be sure that your project meets both county and federal regulations. You'll also be doing your part to keep Thurston County beautiful for all species.
So that gives you a big broad overview of where we started and why we started this. It is due to a federal listing, not a county listing. In response to that federal listing, the, the county felt the best way forward for our permitting, for our development, was to develop this habitat conservation plan. And a habitat conservation plan is at its core a mitigation plan. It has to be reviewed and approved by U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And once it's approved, the county will obtain an incidental take permit. So this is a regulatory permitting process that the county is going through on behalf of its constituents. Like I said, it's in response to the federal species listing. It is a pathway forward for projects that streamlines all of the different federal and local permitting processes. It provides certainty for the next thirty years and it maintains control at the local level. We went through what, what options we had way back at the, in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen. And what we found was that project proponents were going through this spiral of submit to the local county, submit to the federal government, federal government changes, which means you need to make changes to the local government's requirements, or excuse me, the local government's application. And the back and forth and back and forth just would go on and on and on. We also had an issue trying to find mitigation for small projects. Big companies or big developers could had the capital to purchase large tracts of land and do the mitigation, smaller property owners did not, so they ended up having to parcel out a portion of their property, which provided this piecemeal mitigation, took up their own property and they would then have to then do the mitigation on, onsite, which meant they, they needed to mill, they needed to put the money into doing the work that the federal government said needed to be done in order to maintain this species. And it was, wasn't going well. We have actually only four individual incidental take permits for single-family homes in Thurston County over the last six years. So it was a long arduous process, wasn't working well. We needed a newer approach. So the new approach is Habitat Conservation Plan, which is a programmatic permit that the county will obtain from U.S. Fish and Wildlife that sets the framework for what an applicant needs to do in order to meet those ESA requirements. It's transparent, it's faster, streamlined, and it provides better mitigation overall in a local context. So where will it work? The programmatic is for unincorporated Thurston County, so those areas of the UGAs that the county permits as well as rural county that overlap with these covered species habitat. So it's not all areas, just the areas within our, within the county's permitting jurisdiction where those species live. Excuse me for one moment. All right. So which species are covered? We are covering the Oregon Besper Sparrow, the Taylor Chuggerspot Butterfly, the Oregon Spotted Frog and the three subspecies of Mozama Pocket Gopher. So four subspecies were listed, three subspecies are known to reside in Thurston County. The fourth one is only known to occur within Pierce County. So we are only covering the ones here within Thurston County and that's the Olympia, the Yelm and the Tenino. Pocket Gopher. It will cover most developments. Your typical building permits, subdivisions, accessory structures, septics, all the county infrastructure permits, capital projects, roads, right of ways, all of that. What it doesn't cover are mining activities. Mining activities are large, they're, they don't occur very often here in Thurston County. And to develop the information that was necessary to provide to you as fish and wildlife was found to be very difficult. difficult. So mining is not part of the covered activities. They would need to obtain an incidental take permit project by project through US Fish and Wildlife. They still need county permits for land use. They just wouldn't get HCP review. The permitting process is going to change a little bit with the Habitat Conservation Plan. Currently, those that fall into areas of habitat for the Mazama Pocket Gopher need to wait until June to start their review process and species survey. That will end. We will be able to issue a permit at any point during the year for the Mazama Pocket Gopher for the Taylor Chuggerspot Butterfly and for the Oregon Besper Sparrow. They'll submit a permit to the county. The county will review that permit against the requirements within the HCP and the ordinance. The county will have the mitigation available for the property owners to purchase. They'll determine the mitigation fee, which is based on habitat quality and area of impact. And once the applicant pays for that mitigation fee to the county, their requirements under ESA are complete. The county will then take those funds and put that into the conservation land system and conservation program and develop the conservation sites for the Mazama Pocket Gopher, the Taylor Chuggerspot Butterfly, and the other covered species. Applicants do have the ability to pursue their own incidental take permit through the federal government. So the HCP is a voluntary process for the county. They could go to US Fish and Wildlife and say, okay, I've got this project. It's big, it's complicated. We're going to get a permit through you all and then take that back to the county. It's an option and it's typically an option that is more likely to occur in very large projects or projects that have what we call a federal nexus. So the conservation program that's been developed is this four piece puzzle. It includes minimization of impacts by the, oh, hang on, Helen?
Thank you, Christina. Could you go back to that slide? Could you go back? Yeah, there we go. Um, I just had a question about timeframe, like if if this is the system, and I understand the concept is to streamline the permitting process through this, but if if the mitigation money is going into creating the conservation land system, how is the county thinking about that that kind of period of time between when this goes into effect and when that system is created? Like, how does the habitat conservation happen during that time? How is it assured that permits do not go to lands that could become part of the conservation land system ultimately?
So, great question. Currently, the county is so back up one more. The county is investing funds into the conservation lands, into the conservation program through using conservation futures dollars. So currently, the county is purchasing lands that will be used as mitigation for to offset future development. The lands that we are looking to acquire because they're voluntary from willing sellers, we're having to work with our partners to identify and talk to those current property owners to see if they are willing to put an easement over a portion of their property or sell their property fee title to the county. However, we can't we can't tell the property owner or yeah, developer that they can't develop their property because we want it for conservation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm trying to understand if the county has in mind, I mean, there's a map of these proposed of these proposed sort of larger area conservation pieces, but it sounds like it's not guaranteed that they would actually be in place or exist or be assured at the time that the HCP is passed. I guess that's the, that's my question about the timeframe.
So we only, per the federal government's rules, the county only has to mitigate for those impacts. And at the moment, we've said, we've done this analysis and we said, we've got potentially X amount of, and we'll get to all of that here in a minute, X amount of acres of impact and therefore will need X amount of acres of conservation. However, it is a pay as you go system where you put the mitigation in place that then allows us to issue those permits. And it's kind of a leapfrog process. So no, not all of the land is guaranteed at the moment to be in place at the time of HCP. Excuse me, at the time of the federal government issuing their incidental take permit. But what we're saying to the federal government is that at the end of our 30 year incidental take permit period, we will have this it's about 3,500 acres of conservation in place for the debits or the the impacts that have been described in the Habitat Conservation Plan. Explain this a little bit more as we move forward. Doug?
So I guess, so are they, is the attempt to purchase land prior to the need of mitigation?
The is, yes, we are purchasing lands to have in place conservation that can be so that we can issue permits when the when the board adopts the ordinance. When it goes into effect. Because the federal government says you have to have the conservation in place prior to the impacts happening. So we have to get ahead of that curve. Eric, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, I was hoping that you could tell us a little bit more about the mitigation fee that a developer would have to pay to mitigate his impacts. And you said that that is usually calculated off a habitat quality and and amount of impact. Is there anything, would we be allowed to, or could we also factor in other attributes such as if we had value judgments about what kind of development it is? Like if we decided that mitigation for industrial parks or big box store warehouses is different than the impacts that would be for a school or a hospital or something like that?
So through the process of discussion and negotiation with US Fish and Wildlife, the, how we calculate the impacts is had to be based on habitat and not necessarily on the type of development that was coming in. There may be areas where the county could adjust fees based on that, but that would have to be done in a manner that's allows the county to collect the same amount of funds so that we can, because we have to assure the federal government that we will have the funding now and into the future to maintain the habitat, to maintain that and that conservation program and the preservation of that program in perpetuity. In short, no.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna talk at a high level about the conservation program and what goes into that tonight and we'll probably have more conversations in detail as we move throughout review of the ordinance and the HCP in future meetings. The conservation program contains four pieces. The minimization, avoidance and minimization on behalf, part of the developer or applicant is one piece. The other three pieces are the land, the conservation land system itself, protecting, enhancing new reserves. So that's new properties that the county purchases in fee title. Enhance, maintain, enhance and maintain existing preserves. So that's working with conservation is, excuse me, conservation land trusts and WDFW to provide dollars to maintain properties that they already have above and beyond what they currently have funding for or had determine their need of so that we don't necessarily take additional properties off of the landscape. And then, of course, we also had a lot of interest from the agricultural community in participating in this program. So securing and maintaining workings lands easements. Mazama Pocket Gopher, for example, are very compatible with certain types of agricultural activities, including grazing activities, which we have a number of in southeast county. So all of that was taken into account and this conservation program was developed. Now, these numbers are what we're currently projecting for each different type. Within the conservation land system, these numbers can change if we find that more agricultural property owners are very interested in working with us to put conservation easements over properties that 339 acres may be 500 acres or 700 acres. But based on the land uses that we currently see in the landscape, these are the number, the acres that we project at the moment that we had to provide to US Fish and Wildlife. So we know about 433 acres of existing preserves could be enhanced and brought into our system. And then we would need to look for 2,698 acres of new land out in the system, excuse me, out on the landscape. This, these particular acres are total acres over 30 years. We do not need these at the beginning. We need a percentage of these. So what we're looking at currently is a two-year goal of about 20% of the overall projected need. And we've already started, we county has already started to acquire some of those lands. So we've purchased somewhere in the neighborhood of about 200 acres of land currently. It happens to all be in South County at the moment. There is some additional land in progress and we're still working with willing sellers to find and negotiate these particular purchases. So where within the landscape are we looking for to place this? These conservation lands, US Fish and Wildlife, early in our process back in 20 14, 15, developed what they call reserve priority areas. And these are areas in which we will target and will be high priorities for the county to look at for willing sellers. Some land that is part of our conservation land system may very well be outside of these reserve priority areas, but it provided the county a target to look within instead of trying to guess. And these reserve priority areas are areas where there are known occupancy, high quality, well, as high as we have in Thurston County, quality prairies that can be enhanced to appropriate levels to maintain the species over time. The lands will be professionally managed. The county with the funds will hire out the specialized work of enhancement and restoration of prairies and of Oregon Spotted Frog Habitat. It's not something that the county will has the expertise in and will not be hiring staff to set up a new program. There are professionals out there that do this. So we'll be looking to partner with a conservation land trust or other type conservation entity out there to help us with those site management plans and do the work out on those properties. The work in enhancement and maintenance of those properties will take a property from its for the most part degraded prairie status to a high quality prairie. That is the goal, our future desired conditions for those particular properties because the better the habitat, the more credits are available to the county off of that particular piece of property, which means the more development can occur. So costs, the county is investing in the mitigation program to reduce the cost to the individual property owners. The HCP itself will save time and money compared to the status quo. And we had an economic study done of the HCP that showed that having a habitat conservation, programmatic habitat conservation plan actually is a economic boost to the county. And there's more information. I believe you all received the executive summary of that particular study. And if you'd like to see the full study, I can provide that link to you from the website. And there will be self-service calculators for property owners and developers so that they can start projecting what those costs might be. So if they want to adjust what their development looks like so that they can bring down the costs because the less you impact, the less you pay. There is a customized tool. It's called the Habitat calculation tool that was developed specifically for the Habitat Conservation Plan. This takes into account breeding and foraging of all the covered species throughout their lifecycle. It's tuned in to our current, our local area in our local species. So this isn't an off the shelf product. It was something that was created for our area. It looks at the overall habitat and measures it as a percent of optimal condition. So we look to see what is what would be 100% optimal and there's gradations below that. And we will go in depth, how that all works later on. So this might not make a whole lot of sense until you see the the tool at work. So mentioned this before, the size and quality are the drivers for the mitigation fee. The bigger the impact, the higher the quality, the higher, the more credits are needed. And then the mitigation fee is based on the credit need times the cost of that credit. The Habitat Conservation Plan is adaptable. It is a 30-year programmatic. So we needed to make sure that it was adaptable for known uncertain for known uncertainties like climate change. Although there are a number of factors built into the Habitat Conservation Plan that account for climate change, we can't know all of the factors that might change over the next 30 years. So there are change circumstances with triggers in the Habitat Conservation Plan and a guide of if that trigger is, trigger threshold is met, what then happens? So there is no guessing about what might happen if a trigger is, if a threshold is triggered. It's there for people to see, okay, well, okay, there was a spill. So what does that mean? We had to take some land off of the conservation system or there was a fire out on a conservation system. What, what does that trigger? What actions will we have to take to do that? So as transparent as possible. The Habitat Conservation Plan does look to partnerships and collaboration, working with developers, the community as a whole, our farmers, especially in south county, and our conservationists. So we are looking to, the county is looking to partner with people to make sure that the conservation program works as a whole. So the timing for all of this, there was a lot of public input at the beginning. In 2014, 2015 and 2016, the county did focused discussions with entities. We had community meetings and did a scoping for this particular project. All that information was then taken and put into the HCP. We've had a number of iterations of the draft Habitat Conservation Plan, making sure that US Fish and Wildlife understood what we were doing and that the county was meeting the federal requirements to obtain an incidental take permit. In 2020, we passed a threshold. We actually started the environmental review process, the NEPA-SEPA process, which was great. We're, we've developed, excuse me, an environmental impact statement that has gone out for public input. The draft EIS comment period ended in November of last year. We've taken those comments. We have made some minor modifications to the EIS and the final EIS will be coming out here shortly. In the meantime, we have to also create an ordinance because even though the county receives an incidental take permit from the federal government, the local county has to have a regulation in place to actually implement the Habitat Conservation Plan and provide the information in a manner that is understandable and digestible by the government. The HCP is written for the federal government. The ordinance needs to be written, although it needs to be legal, have some legal ease and it needs to be written so that the, the public can actually understand and know how to move through a review process. We're looking at a incidental take permit issuance in early quarter two of 2022 and thereafter, the ordinance adoption by the Board of County Commissioners mid-quarter two of 2022, which means you all will see all that information here in the coming months. More information about the HCP can be found at thurstonhcp.org. And that ends my presentation. If there are any questions, I can certainly answer them and will bring back more information specific to implementation.
Looks like there are a few questions. Let's go Joel, Eric and then Barry.
Sure, thank you. I just had a question, a few slides back where it had the, the circular kind of path of, oh, it was, I don't know if you can bring that up, but it had the conservation planning and then the management. I just wasn't clear on, on the arrow that said assumption-based research. I wondered if you could define that for me or give me a little understanding what that indicated.
Sure. So WDFW does most of the research for the area for these species, but US Fish and Wildlife does as well. We did develop a conservation design based on information that we currently know. We then implement that conservation plan and we monitor the outcomes from that implementation. One of the other things we do is to make sure that the information has scientific backing. So WDFW has been looking at, for example, the kinds of vegetation that need to be in, on a property for healthy Mazama pocket gopher populations. The current assumption is that we need to have these native vegetation, these native plants. What we're finding is that it doesn't necessarily have to be native. That is the preferred, but the type of vegetation, be it a grass versus a rhizome, the types of vegetation, does it have, you know, fleshy roots? So we would then take that information and adapt our maintenance and monitoring or conservation plan as necessary, implement that and see if we get the results that the research had talked about and we're maintaining our population because they have substantial, or excuse me, the necessary food, although not native. That was a mouthful.
Thank you. I actually understood that pretty well. So thanks, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Go ahead, Eric.
I have a couple of questions about the, the financing part of this. I, I understand that the Conservation Futures Program is going to be doing half a million dollars a year. And then the other source for this would actually be coming from the developers and their mitigation fees. Is there any other money that's coming in to buy up these habitat credits? Or are those the only two sources?
At this time, those are the only two sources for the county's conservation program.
Okay. And then I'm sure that when, I'm sure that the feds are telling us that we, the, we can forecast moderately accurately, hopefully, the amount of credits that we, or the amount of debits that we're going to need. And since we have to pre-buy our credits, how big of a ratio is that? Like, are they expecting us to have a year or two's banked up before we start handing out take permit, incidental take permits? Or, I mean, is, is half a million dollars going to get this program started from Conservation Futures before we start collecting fees? Or, or I have, what's the total value, annual value of this program slated to be? I mean, is this thing gonna be super? I don't know, is this a million dollar a year program? Or is this a $50 million a year program?
So we're in the middle. Um, I can bring back specific numbers. They're in the Habitat Conservation Plan currently. Those numbers are our best guesses at this point, are our best estimates at this point, based on a whole number of factors. But we're, yeah. I'll get up right now. Annually, we're projecting to, so if we, so it's, it's a bit of a big ask because when we did the analysis to determine what kind of impacts and how many impacts might we see over 30 years, we just took that number and then divided it by 30, assuming that we have evenly paced development. However, reality is that we don't have evenly paced development. It, it's the cyclical cycle of lots of stuff happening and then not lots of stuff happening. So the numbers reflect a linear line of, we're always going to have a lot of, a lot of development happening over the years, looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of, I gotta do math. Somewhere in the neighborhood of about 3.5 to 4 million a year need. But that isn't necessarily something that is actually going to happen. Again, that assumes that we have high development rates every year for the next 30 years. And that's just not typically how development works nor how a habitat conservation plan is implemented in reality. When you see this working in other states like Florida or Texas or California, what you see is that people will minimize and avoid and the need to have a great amount of credits or mitigation is a whole lot less than we actually anticipated.
But does the feds dictate exactly how much of a reserve you have to have? Or has the county determined how much it wants to have yet? And?
So we've determined that we'll need somewhere between 10 to 20% of the 30-year overall so that we can maintain issuance of permits and not have to tell somebody at the front desk that they'll have to wait, you know, three months.
How, how close are we to having that?
I don't have.
Any percent?
I don't have those numbers on me at the moment. I can get that for you.
Thank you very much.
First, Christina, I'd just like to thank you for an excellent presentation as a, you know, forward presentation on the HCP program. This is something that's been needed in this county for a long time. The last couple of years, I've seen my neighbors and stuff struggle to get a Mazama pocket gopher study done. They've had to wait two or three years to get a building permit. So this is really needed. I have a couple of questions. Reading your memorandum, executive memorandum you sent out on page two, I noticed that you said that this HCP will cover all the areas except the city areas of Olympia, Tumwater and Lacey. You included Tonito and Bogota in there, but I didn't see Yelm or Rainier mentioned.
Right. So the Habitat Conservation Plan covers our permitting jurisdiction. So that's the UGAs of Yelm tonight. Well, Tonito doesn't have much of a UGA, but what little is left, Tonito, the UGA of Lacey, Tumwater and Olympia, as well as rural Thurston County. It does not include any of the city incorporated city limits or the town of Lakota.
Okay, so Yelm and Rainier have their own HCP plan?
So I know the city of Yelm is developing their HCP. They have just started that particular process. I believe there are a P to hire a consultant to develop, to develop their plan. Just ended, so they're in the process.
Okay, so they are, Yelm and Rainier are not included in the HCP for Thurston County. Yet they're not mentioned in your, in the top part of your memorandum as being excluded from it. I just point that out, something you may want to include. The other thing, have, have you established a cost per credit yet?
Yes, there is a cost per credit for, and it's within the HCP. We'll go over those pieces when we talk about how to, how the HCP moves through crediting and debiting.
Does it give some examples for like a large development commercial versus an individual property?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we can go through all that.
Is the HCP done?
The H, well, as far as the county is concerned.
You mentioned if we asked for a copy, we could get one. I mean, I'd like to get a hard copy and I can pick it up there at the planning department.
Sure, I can get that arranged.
Okay, I'm, I'm there frequently, so just let me know when it's available and I'll come by and pick it up.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thanks Christina, great job. Is there any other questions or comments? Oh, Helen has her hand up.
Yeah, sorry, just really quickly, because I, again, I'm kind of new to, to the, the commission and the process. So it sounded to me like this is a pretty short timeline for the commission to be involved. And so I guess I'd like just a thumbnail sketch of what the county is, you know, what the, what is going to be sought from, you know, what you're going to be asking us about it. Because I'm hearing a lot of discussion about permitting and about, you know, the, the kind of, the machine that's going to work here. I would like to hear always, you know, about its protectiveness of the species concerned as well. So just, you know, a little heads up about that. But, but I'd just like to better, oh, sorry, better understand what we're, what our work is going to be.
Sure. Great segue. The, so as I said, the Habitat Conservation Plan is a plan to obtain incidental take permit. So the county itself is going through a regulatory process. So there are going to be a number of pieces that are agreed to already. What will the staff will be bringing before the board is the mechanism to implement the plan. That ordinance that says, these are the things that you need to provide to the county in order for the application to be considered complete. This is when you need to pay for that mitigation. Now, we're gonna request that the mitigation be paid in full at time of permit issuance? Or is it going to be, you know, can they have some sort of payment plan? So mitigation, or excuse me, mitigation, the permitting process, is this an administrative permit review? Or do we want to have the hearing examiner review these and approve these? So it's the mechanism by which we actually issue that permit and the take coverage. There will be a new ordinance that is developed for the HCP as well as some changes that will be needed, amendments needed to the critical area ordinance to point to the new, the new ordinance.
Thanks, Chris. I'm not seeing any other hands or head shakes. So, okay, thank you Christina, great job as usual. And we're moving to item six on our agenda, the work session and recommendation for the Shoreline Master Program. Andrew, you're away.
Okay, thank you Chair Simmons. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Andrew Defobus. I am an interim senior planner with Community Planning and Economic Development. I'd like to extend extra welcome to our new members that are here tonight. So the main project that I am tasked with in general and certainly before you is, is working on the county's shoreline master program update. And I was not, not aware that we have all of our new members tonight. I probably would have prepared a little bit of a different presentation to go along with this, but I'll, I'll, I'll give you some opening remarks just to kind of provide some context to the work that the planning commission's been doing. So the Shoreline Master Program is the overall policies and regulations that govern development and redevelopment along our shoreline areas. Broadly speaking, that includes Puget Sound. It includes lakes that are larger than 20 acres. It includes streams with a flow of greater than 20 feet, cubic feet per second. And it includes shorelands along these water bodies and also wetlands, floodplains and other critical areas that are associated with those water bodies. So the current Shoreline Master Program that we are implementing is from 1990. We are currently doing our update as required by state law, which includes comprehensive elements that have been adopted. We are currently doing our update as required by state law, which includes comprehensive elements that have been adopted in state law. You know, back in the early two thousands, and it also includes periodic elements that have been adopted in state law more recently. And so we're doing this update to be coincide with requirements in state law. Update has been going on for quite some time. The most recent significant milestone we've had was the planning commission held its public hearing on the SMP update back in October. So we did that both virtually and in person, had a hybrid format. We got about three hundred written comments on that. We had about twenty seven folks either show up in person or on Zoom to testify. And over the last several work sessions since October, the planning commission has been working through those items that that were left as options in the draft for the public to comment on. And other, and also raising any other issues planning commission wants to raise based on the public comments they received. So one big portion of that is is looking at the way that our shorelines are mapped. We received several requests from citizens to take another look at select shoreline reaches, reaches a segment of shoreline. That's kind of like a planning unit. So to look at how several of those reaches were proposed to be designated. And, you know, they provided information or requests for us to to take another look alongside the criteria for designating these these reaches and, you know, to to provide an updated assessment. So that's what we're going to be focusing on tonight. And I can certainly give more information or context as we move along. Please feel free to ask questions. Okay, and I have some other thoughts, but I think I'll launch into it and just try to splice things in. So give me one second and I'll launch the presentation. Soon as it shows me the option. Okay, hopefully our folks seeing the PowerPoint. Yes, okay, great. And I can see some of your faces, not all of them, so I either raise your hand and if I'm not responding, please feel free to kind of speak up because I can, I can see some of you. Okay. So as I mentioned, the county has received several requests from citizens to look at select shoreline reaches during the the public comment period. Previously, the the planning commission who was who was considering the update at the time has been provided links to all of the comments that all citizens made, which includes these shoreline environment designation requests. I'll make sure that the, all the comments and all the appropriate background documents get sent out to the new members. So we're looking at those requests and then staff analysis and recommendations on the shoreline reaches beginning tonight. And we certainly will not get through them all tonight. We've got about a dozen. I've teed up five for you this evening and we'll see how far we get. So the planning commission upon review of the designation criteria and the ground conditions on these shoreline reaches may propose to change the shoreline environment designations, you know, if it's warranted by that criteria. And so, yeah, we'll have a few meetings with these, so, you know, let me know if there's anything that the planning commission as a body wants to see different about the approach. We can try to accommodate that, but I'm basing, based all this tonight on how we did a few of these at the beginning of last year. And that that seemed to work pretty well, so you'll correct me if I am wrong in that assessment. All right, so here's some background on shoreline environment designations. So all local jurisdictions that are updating a shoreline master program are required to conduct an inventory and characterization of their shoreline. That looks at all the existing level of development, the the zoning, the degree of shoreline modification, the functions that are being provided on those shorelines. And then use that information to propose shoreline environment designations or SEDs, SEDs for for the shoreline reaches. I've listed out a couple of the WAPs that provide broad guidance on on this process. And there are also, there's a chapter in the Ecology's Shoreline Master Program Handbook that deals with this. And the county has a report that details its methodology as well. Helen, go ahead.
Yeah, I I'm not sure, you know, what else you're going to talk about, so I'm going to ask this question now. You're probably well aware that the legislature right now is talking about some potential legislation that might add a category, the the Senate Bill five, six, six, five, the Lorraine Loomis Act talks about creating a a mapping of riparian management zones for salmon and steelhead. That would be another overlay to these things. Are you giving any consideration to that? And how that might impact the timing of create, creating these, these designations?
We're not necessarily that one specifically, if that has not yet been adopted. You know, we're looking, and I'm not intimately familiar with that bill. And if it, if it, if it itself is going to make changes to the Shoreline Management Act, which guides the work that we're doing here, then potentially we would need to look at that if that becomes final before we finish this update. But currently, the update is based on on the Shoreline Management Act and the ecology, the WAPs in the legislature that are currently in place.
But I guess my question then would be, I mean, more broadly, is there, you know, is there room to include higher, higher levels of salmon recovery requirement if they should happen to come along or, you know, get slated for the following year?
Yeah, there potentially is. One thing I would say is that, you know, the shoreline master program and the regulations there and are only one piece of the puzzle when it comes to how land is protected and how we steward those resources. So there may be possibility to, you know, update policy language within the document to include those things at a high level. But as you drill down, you know, the development standards, the shoreline environment designations and the development standards that go along with them and the mitigation that goes along with projects, all these things are supposed to work together to advance multiple goals, including protecting the wildlife elements of of our shorelines. So I think there is room at a policy level. And, you know, some of those other rules that are already in place, such as our critical area protections, which deal with riparian and Puget Sound protections, those things are being wrapped into the Shoreline Master Program update as well. So I think it's just going to depend on the timing, but that's certainly something we can keep an eye on. So the county is using, so ecology has developed, you know, and the legislature have developed guidance in the WAPs and the count for designating shorelines. And the county is using five of the six categories that ecology recommends. And so those are shoreline residential, urban and rural conservancy, natural and the aquatic designation. I'll talk a little bit more about them in in the next slide. And just for fun, I decided to put the, you know, the just record here of previous times that shoreline environment designations come before the planning commission. They've been discussed either broadly or individual requests to review reaches in a number of meetings stretching back over the last couple of years. So the, the, as I mentioned, the county in the earlier phase of the update, the county produced a shoreline environment designation report that documents all the recommended shoreline environment designations for all of our shoreline reaches and the methodology that went into to doing that work. And it was based on the inventory characterization. So all that data that was collected about our shorelines was evaluated alongside of the criteria for each of these shoreline environment designations to propose a designation for each shoreline reach. And then the preliminary shoreline environment designations, the goal of those is to assure the protection of shoreline ecological function while factoring in the proposed level of development that has occurred or is is planned to occur along a given shoreline. So as a high level methodology in the environment, or excuse me, shoreline environment designation report. So the consultants and county took a look at all of the reaches and all the criteria. And essentially, those areas that had really high quality function, they were really intact and had minimal shoreline modification were proposed to give a designation of natural reaches that were more densely developed, had more residential uses and, you know, smaller lots. A majority of those lots within shoreline jurisdiction, which is typically within two hundred feet of the waterline ordinary high watermark, those were given a designation of shoreline residential. And others were either urban or rural conservancy, depending on their specific level of development and their proximity to urban areas of the county, the the urban growth areas. And so a couple of notes I took down here, just kind of generally speaking, if you can kind of picture it this way. You know, the natural designation, as I mentioned, because it's for areas that are largely intact. And the whole overall effort has a requirement to provide for no net loss of ecological function. If you are something that's designated natural, that's going to tend to allow the least amount of impacts and be the most protected. And then shoreline residential allows more flexibility, smaller buffers, potentially more uses are going to be allowed there with rural and urban conservancy kind of in the middle. There are caveats to that, but that's, that's a rule of thumb to kind of think of. And in general, you know, what these shoreline environment designations control, once they're placed on a shoreline, that governs what types of land uses are going to be allowed in that environment or whether they'll be allowed. The permits that are needed and what what development rules and what sort of mitigation is going to be required. So it kind of sets the stage that high level for all the types of land uses that that may potentially occur. And just some things, the caveats are things to keep in mind when looking at this. You know, some of the the criteria for these categories kind of overlap and there aren't necessarily hard and fast definitions for for every piece of them. So you might look at a shoreline reach and say that it doesn't neatly fit in one box. It might meet the criteria of of more than one. So we're, what we're looking to do is to create or create a best fit based on the ground conditions and the criteria. The shoreline environment designation system is only one component of ensuring no net loss of ecological function, which is a requirement of a shoreline master program. And so that should be weighed when we're considering, you know, potential changes to the to the system. Because ultimately, the county needs to demonstrate that its entire program, including the designations that we that we put on shorelines, is meeting no net loss. We'll be looking at shoreline maps and, you know, areas that depict portions of properties that are that are proposed to be covered by the shoreline master program. But I want to make sure to reiterate that the shoreline jurisdiction is actually confirmed in the field. The location of the ordinary high watermark, which governs, you know, how far out that two hundred foot line of jurisdiction is measured and how far that buffer is from that water line is measured in the field can change over time. And the other layers that go into our general overlay of where this master program applies, such as wetlands and floodplains are subject to change as data changes and also need to be confirmed in the field. So we use the best data that we have to map areas that we believe are subject to this master program, but the ground conditions will always control. You could be shown on the map and not actually regulated by it. You could not be shown on the map and ultimately end up with shoreline master program regulations when you apply. So the map is a screening tool used by planners and to inform the public of where the shoreline master program is, where we believe that applies. And also shoreline environment designations, not the only factor that affects shoreline development. Several other pieces will affect that as well, such as zoning rules, the density requirements in whatever zoning district you're in and critical area regulations. It's so you might have a shoreline residential parcel that's got a fifty foot buffer in the shoreline master program. But that parcel may also contain a wetland that has a two hundred foot buffer. And the largest, most protective buffer is going to control if you have multiple critical areas or shoreline features on your property. Okay, I think that's all the preamble I have, and I'll pause there just for a moment and let folks know for anyone who is listening and is not able to see this and or anyone who just wants to kind of look through this presentation, it is available on the planning commission's website. So go ahead and go out there and grab that if you would like to. So the first item we're going to look at, the first reach is known as its butt inlet reach sixteen to seventeen. And in general, if you look at the picture on the left, we're talking about the area up adjacent to Boston Harbor. You know, north of Olympia and the picture on the right shows the area of shoreline reach bounded in thick yellow lines. That's the, that's the reach we're talking about here. Currently, this reach is designated, I need to move the zoom so I can see, okay. Currently, that reach is designated rural, which is, it's modern category would be shoreline residential. Except for two parcels in the southeast corner are actually conservancy. Rural conservancy. That's one thing I forgot to mention. So the, when I say current shoreline environment designation, that's going to be nineteen ninety. It's what is in place today on the ground. And the update is using the more modern naming system. So you'll hear me use those terms interchangeably, but but the same sort of system applies. The rural shorelines today are most closely related to shoreline residential in the update. Conservancy is most closely related to the rural or urban conservancy. Natural is most closely related to natural. So currently, mostly rural here. The proposed shoreline environment designation in the most recent draft of the SMP is rural conservancy. However, there are past versions of maps where it was proposed to be shoreline residential. And I tried to go back and look and figure out exactly when and why that was changed or what the rationale was for that change. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but, you know, we are taking a fresh look at this reach because we have had multiple folks come in and say, you know, we think this should be shoreline residential, it was proposed to be shoreline residential at one point in the process, please restore that. So we are taking a fresh look at that. You know, this is my first crack at it as project manager, official crack. Okay. So here are some of the issues that were raised by citizens during the 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 public comment period. I've listed out the comment letters that touched on this issue. As you can see, it was multiple comment letters. And again, these comments are available online for folks to see and links were previously sent to the planning commission back during at the, at the conclusion of the public comment period. So folks who are supporting a designation of shoreline residential for this area have stated that this is part of the original Boston Harbor plat. It's got a limited area of more intense rural development zoning, that's what Lambert is. And that it is all on sewer system, so essentially it's functioning as urban development. That the area has a history of residential development, it's been there for a long time, it was residentially developed, you know, back during the old master program. And that it features homes that are close to the shoreline that have shoreline armoring, lawns and decks, things that we would call, you know, modification of the shoreline. That native vegetation has been removed in places and that the area is similar in character to other shoreline reaches that have been proposed to be shoreline residential. So us too. Okay, so what I've done here is I have these slides kind of throughout so that you can look at the shoreline reach in question alongside the criteria for each designation that that is kind of a play. And so I can also pull up other maps if necessary, if we need another view, if we need to zoom in, whatever, let me know, it will help. But we are, in this instance, we're looking at the entire reach. So in between the the yellow thick lines that you can see there. So what you see on this slide and what you'll see throughout the presentation is on the left, we've got the shoreline environment designation criteria that are listed in our shoreline environment designation report. In the middle column, you'll see notes on information that I found related to these categories in either the said report or the inventory characterization. And on the right is my notes for staff analysis. And please do not commit this to memory. I don't plan to speak every word on these slides, but I'm putting it out there for the purposes of conversation and reference. And we'll just kind of move through these. So for this instance, looking at the criteria, I'm going to just kind of state the criteria and kind of state the conclusions that I was able to reach for each of these as as best as I was able to reach them. So for this reach, is it outside incorporated municipalities and outside of urban growth areas? Yes, it is. This area is outside of incorporated cities, it is outside of urban growth areas. But it is a residential Lambert. Is it currently supporting low intensity resource based uses? Currently, this shoreline location does offer the opportunity for private recreation for the landowners that live there. But the same can be said for, you know, any parcel, if you own it, you can recreate on it. And also potentially aquaculture, and in many cases, aquaculture is being done. And then the primary use of this reach, however, is residential development. So the next criteria, so let me back up for a sec. So in looking at this rural conservancy environment. So in looking at this rural conservancy environment, we're looking to see, you know, if it's outside of these areas, outside of the city. And you know, is it's a, and does it, you know, meet one of these following things? So it doesn't have to meet all of them, but, but these are the factors or the criteria that can potentially render a recommendation for rural conservancy. So is it currently accommodating residential uses? It is. It is accommodating residential uses of varying intensity and distance from the shoreline as you move throughout the reach. So not every parcel is alike, but the vast majority of these parcels do feature residential development. Is it supporting human uses, but subject to environmental limitations? That's yes. And so, yes, it is supporting human uses. But yes, it is subject to some limitations. There are steep slopes mapped in many areas and you can see some of the other information there that the SED report has, has included. And Puget Sound itself contains floodplain and also is mapped as estuary in a marine wetland. But one of the things that we're looking for is, you know, how much of the upland area is subject to these limitations as well? Cause anything below the ordinary high watermark in that aquatic designation is, is going to be you know, subject to those limitations. So can this reach support low intensity water dependent uses without adverse impacts to shoreline functions? This may be the most appropriate in areas that have intact vegetation. Trying to think back to the no net loss piece. Some areas have been more developed, other areas are less developed and potentially are having higher function. Is this area of high recreational value? Or does it have valuable historic or cultural resources, potential for public access? There's limited public access potential, as I mentioned, these are smaller parcels in individual private ownership. I did not see anything listed in the, either the, of the reports in that middle column there or on our geo data information system for cultural or historic sites, although I would point out that Puget Sound as a whole and its Thailand's, as we know, are cultural significance to the local tribes. I am not aware of any significant public access opportunities. And yeah, it's, it's all privately owned and you know. Okay. And then does it meet the designation for the natural environment? If it, if it does, you know, that's potentially the way you go versus rural conservancy. It does not appear in staff analysis to meet the criteria for the natural environment, given the presence of development, the modification of shoreline and the vegetation within shoreline jurisdiction. Okay. So next, again, here's our shoreline reach and we're going to look at the criteria for shoreline residential, which again is typically afforded to the shorelines that have, have featured, you know, the most development. And looking at the criteria there on the left, there are four criteria for this shoreline environment designation. So the first being, does it meet either that it does not meet the criteria for natural or rural conservancy? So as I mentioned, I do not believe this meets the criteria for the natural SED. However, portions of the reach do appear to meet some criteria of rural conservancy. And the central portion of the reach appears to be much more densely developed than either end of that reach. Is it predominantly single family or multi-family residential development or planned or plotted for residential development? This reach does have Lambert zoning. It's, I believe it's, it's either one to one or two to one zoning. Most of the lots do contain residential development. Many homes specifically in that central portion appear to be either close to or within the 50 foot buffer that the shoreline residential designation would allow or would provide for, and that's the same buffer that rural is providing for today. And there are some shoreline modifications. Is the majority of these lots, or you know, looking at the lots in this reach are the majority of them within shoreline jurisdiction? That appears to be true for virtually all the lots in this reach. And have ecological functions been impacted by more intense modification in use? Again, that appears to vary across the reach. Some lots appear to be more developed than others. However, on either end of the reach, many parcels appear to contain wider strips of vegetated area between the water and the structures, which suggests there may have been fewer impacts and modifications to these shorelines. One big caveat for that approach or statement is that, you know, I'm doing all of this analysis based on the tools I have at my disposal. And have not conducted a site visit for any of these you're going to hear tonight. So staff findings for this reach are that portions of the reach do appear to meet the criteria of both the shoreline and residential and rural conservancy environment, depending on where you're located in the reach. Central portion of that reach does appear to contain more dense development and impacts closer to the shoreline with less vegetation overall in those areas along the shoreline. And that other areas of this reach appear to contain larger vegetated areas and yeah, between the homes and, and the water. So the recommendations for staff on this reach would be two things here, I'll walk you through them. So looking at this reach, if you're looking at the picture in the, on the left there and you see the, the left yellow line. And then you look over to the right picture, you can see the shape of that line kind of changes. And that's because I would recommend, you know, shifting the boundary of this reach over one parcel, because there appears to be one home there that has or one parcel with a home that's closer to the water. The development there is more in character with everything that is to the, to the west there versus what happens as you continue to go to the east. And so to actually move that reach break line to include the additional parcel with shoreline residential. And then looking at the, the shoreline reach as a whole, kind of mirroring the statements I was making about the degree of development in this area. I believe that a change to of the central portion of this reach to shoreline residential may be warranted by the ground conditions in the criteria. But that I do not believe that, that those conditions and that rationale exists across the entire reach. So if you're looking at this and you can kind of see the area in pink in the middle, that's the approximate location that I would say, you know, make those areas shoreline residential on either end retain the, the proposal of rural conservancy. So that is where I'm going to pause. And so now, and I'm at the end of my remarks for this specific shoreline reach. And I'm going to turn it over to planning commission to discuss these recommendations or, or ask questions otherwise.
Just a quick clarifying question, looking at the map on the right. So just to be clear on what, what is being proposed? Is to have the area from the yellow line and then going up around the point to the pink line or whatever you want to call that. That would be rural conservancy. And then in between the two pinks would be residential. And then you go back to rural conservancy around the corner.
Yes. And that's the general approach and you know, these, these squiggles are not legal squiggles. I'll need to formally write up the, what the boundaries are. But in general, you know, there's a gradient of conditions across this reach and so you're correct. And hopefully, I don't know if you can see my cursor moving on the screen or not. If you can, this area here in between the pink lines, my recommendation would be to make that shoreline residential. But you know, on either side of these reaches on this part here and this part down here to retain a proposal of rural conservancy.
And it's fully developed this residential now is what you're saying.
All of the, the vast majority of these lots, if not all of them, there are very few that don't have a residential structure on them. The question and consideration is how close is that structure to the water line? What other impacts have occurred to the parcel?
Andy, did you say that every one of these is on a sewer system? None of these are on septic?
I'm not sure exactly how many, how many are, I, I just know, I was commenting on what the commenters put in. So these are what citizens were saying, they were speaking to the Lambert, they were speaking to the original plat of Boston Harbor. They were speaking to the area being served by sewer system. You know, there is a, there is a sewer system out there in Boston Harbor. It's one of, I believe, four that the county operates outside of the broader north county urban area. But I can't say for sure whether every single one in this reach is on sewer.
Andrew, could you go back to the the slide that gives the criteria?
For
shoreline residential?
I'm going to do this one with the picture?
No, the next one, I think it is.
Okay.
So if you look at the criteria for shoreline residential, the first one, it doesn't meet the criteria for natural. And rural conservancy, I think is questionable. The second one predominantly single family or multi-family residential development, it definitely meets that criteria. Majority of the lot areas within the shoreline jurisdiction, that definitely meets that criteria, as you've already stated in your analysis. And ecological functions have been impacted by more intense modification in use. It definitely meets that criteria. So three and a half of the four criteria are met for shoreline residential. So why are we even having a debate about splitting this, this reach up into three different reaches?
It wouldn't, well, it wouldn't necessarily have to be three reaches. It could stay as one, just with a, you know, a, a strip in the middle. If that's the way that this conversation goes with planning commission. You know, all options are on the table, right? But you know, we're looking at a gradient of conditions here and we're looking at, you have to look at and the cumulative impacts analysis that the county will have to produce for this document is going to have to show that whatever, whatever regulations you have in place and you know, whatever impacts your designation system allows to the shoreline. We have to look at that at full build out and justify that we are somehow meeting no net loss.
And so go back to the other criteria for rural conservancy. We already established that three and a half of these criteria meet residential. Now, if you take a look at rural conservancy criteria, it's outside incorporated municipalities and outside the urban growth areas and at least one of the following. Currently supporting low intensity resource based use such as agriculture, forestry or recreation. Okay. It's not low intensity when you have small parcels with residential homes built on every one of them. Currently accommodating residential uses, yes, it is. Supporting human uses, but subject to environmental limitations such as properties that include or adjacent to steep banks, feeder bus. Yes, it's supporting human uses. Can support low intensity water dependent uses without significant adverse impacts. The impact has already been made. I mean, the, the homes have been there for a long time, the houses, some of them are antique back prior 1970. So the impact to the environment has already been done. Private and or public owned lands, upland areas, high recreational value and valuable historical cultural resources? No, it's not, does not meet the designation criteria for the natural environment. No, it does not. So I'm just looking at this and, and Andrew, you know that I've had many discussions about SEDs and you know what I'm talking about when I talk about SEDs. I do not see, I really don't see what the debate is here. I don't see rural conservancy. I don't see natural. I see shoreline residential.
And so based on, I can tell you when I looked at this and looking at these lots and kind of looking here in the middle, you can see a lot of what you're talking about. I would absolutely agree with you. You see a lot of lots here that have bulkheads that have residential structures either at or within the buffer that the shoreline residential SED would allow. And you see, you see impact that has occurred close to the water line. If you look in other portions of this reach, you see different conditions. You see larger vegetated areas in between these homes and the water. You see fewer impacts. I'm not arguing that, you know, this area is not have residential development. Of course it does, but we have to look at how these lots have all been impacted over time. And if a designation of shoreline residential is put across the whole thing, what additional impacts would that allow? Because that's the information that we need to justify or would have to justify in order to, to have that be adopted and approved by the department of ecology.
But it was previously designated shoreline residential by the previous criteria. You said that upfront and it definitely is shoreline residential. It's got residences, individual private residences on each parcel.
And that is potentially a, a direction the planning commission as a whole can, can go. That certainly is, is on the table and I'm, I'm going to go to Commissioner Wheatley, because she's had her hand up for a while.
Thank you. And I mean, again, I'm new to this process, but do we have a process where we defer to the chair to call on us? Or do we just keep going or you know, how does, this is a question I have for the, for the commission. But to, to get into this, my question is, I absolutely support keeping, you know, the, the designation of rural conservancy. And I want to protect that. And I'm hearing from you that for the, for the two outer edges, you know, that the majority really of the shoreline that we're talking about, it's very appropriate to call that rural conservancy. You are questioning whether it's appropriate to call the strip in the middle, which is a lesser percentage of the total. Whether it's appropriate to designate that as shoreline residential. My question to you, since this is a planning commission and we're looking forward to the future. And the, we know for a fact that, for example, the TRPC's study on current and future basin conditions for but inlet show that if we continue with things in the status quo, that there will be continued degradation. So we know that currently we are not being protective of, you know, no loss. And we're certainly not moving towards net ecological gain unless we do things a little differently. So my question, Andrew, is if we were to keep, if we were to designate the entire area based on the need for most of it to be rural conservancy, what impact would that have on that strip that shoreline residential? It wouldn't have any impact on the current use of that property, right? We're talking about potential future use of the property. And from what I see just from this aerial is that, for example, that could provide habitat for, you know, for, for feeder fish or something like that. You know, you have sand there, you could have sandlance in there. I don't know, you know, I don't have enough information here to know, but as potential future habitat, there might be some potential there. So what, what impact does it have on the current owners of that property? Whether it's zoned as shoreline residential versus shoreline rural conservancy. Because I would certainly like to see, you know, the, for the entirety of this parcel we're talking about clearly, there is value to designating it as rural conservancy.
So you are correct in that, what, you know, the SMP is not retroactive, so the policies would apply to future development. However, you know, it, it will apply within that 200 foot strip of, from the ordinary high watermark. That's shoreline jurisdiction. So currently today, this area is designated rural, which AKA shoreline residential in, in the update. And currently has a 50 foot buffer. As you can see, there are many homes specifically in the central portion of this reach that have developed at or close to that. And you know, there may be others scattered throughout, you know, other portions of the reach, but they appear to be predominantly centered in that area. So you know, new structures that people want to do, accessory structures or anything like that. I mean, the going to rural conservancy as the way the draft update is written, it would change the buffer on future development from 50 feet to 125 feet. So if we're talking specifically about the shoreline buffer, that's the specific impact there. As I mentioned, broadly speaking, as you move from shoreline residential to either of the conservancies to natural, you, you know, that's where the protections for the environment, generally speaking, increases as you go to each step, right? So, so there potentially would be, there are more allowances in the shoreline residential environment than the rural conservancy broadly speaking.
Well, I, I support keeping it all intact as rural conservancy. And not separating out that one section.
Doug, you've got your hand up?
Yes, from this aerial view, we can obviously see tree density differences in the various reaches, which isn't necessarily representative of what it looks like at the ground level. Is there high bank in some of these areas or is this all low bank?
There's steep slopes mapped throughout it. I have to pull up the light art to take a look at the difference across the reach, but I believe the majority of his map is having, having steep slopes. Um, I believe the majority of his map is having having steep slopes.
Having what?
Um, I want to say that there is lower bank kind of in the middle, but um I. Before I would commit to that, I would want to pull up the light art. So if that's information that folks need to see, um. You know, before we move on this, that is certainly something that I could pull.
I I would like to see that because on a high bank typically. People leave a lot of trees because they don't, they want to create stability for the bank, which is good for the. Sure, ecological function. Um, but just because there's trees on it. I don't think makes something conservancy or.
It's not just the fact that it's trees, it's the fact that, you know, it is representative of a more intact. Environment. And then that's hence the concerns about known at loss and, you know, how it's been developed and what what is the best fit here? And I do want to point out, I'll reiterate that point I I made earlier is your shoreline environment designation um. Is not the only thing that's going to control here. We also have regulations for steep slopes and and things like that. So, you know, fifty feet, hundred and twenty five feet, whatever shoreline master program says. There are other regulations that will be at play here that govern how how and where um these parcels could, you know, be further developed.
Sure, but there's other ways to look at this property other than a than an aerial. So that's my point. We could look at. It's hard to make a decision based on this.
This is, this is true. One can see from the aerial that there's a stream, you know, there's a cove, and that is something that's really important to consider. Um, and we haven't discussed that at all. Um, so you're right, it, you know, the the um. The aerial is certainly not good grounds, but just from looking at the fact that we have a cove and a stream there. Um, and and that that is um very close to that area you're you're wanting to pull out of that rural um. Conservancy designation causes me concern.
Um, Commissioner Casino, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, if this was a UGA instead of a limited area of more intense rural development. Um, would this automatically be considered shoreline residential instead of rural conservancy?
Not necessarily. I think we'd also want to look at the urban conservancy environment as well, uh, because that's the purpose of that is, you know, conservancy. Is split urban or rural, depending on whether you're you're in a UGA. Um, or, you know, there are limited areas outside the UGA that actually get that urban conservancy designation depending on. Uh, how they're developed. I'm thinking of, there's one out in the squally that's got the, right as um Calister Creek kind of drains out across the refuge, you've got that RV. Um, campground out there, uh, and that's urban conservancy, but it's not in. A UGA, but it is more urban development, um, you know, in the rural area. So it. It depends. I would say we'd be looking at, you know. Perhaps taking another look at the shoreline residential designation, but also considering urban conservancy in that instance as well.
So that would seem to me then that that it's a uh. It the the political lines are what is determining this and not the actual development. So if this, the development would be consistent with other areas where it is. Shoreline residential or maybe even urban conservancy. Uh, and I don't know if we should think that a. Uh, laminate is is significantly different than a UGA, but I mean, this looks like really intense development to me already, and it's. It's so intense that it is serviced by sewer, uh, at least partially, if not fully. And um, uh, it it when you look at this reach compared to the reach to the west of it, I don't see uh. To me, they look the same. They, I I don't see a a big difference in development there.
Um, if you'd like, I can pull up the map and we could pan over there.
Sure, sure. But like some of these lots are, these are narrow lots, these are sixty foot lots and stuff and. And to think that that's not really developing is already factored into our no net loss calculations because that development's been there forever already. It it's hard for me to see why this would not be shoreline residential.
So I want to, yeah, the the known at loss um is going to look at what's on the ground today. Uh, before the update goes into place, and then what would the effect be? Um, if, you know, if whatever the update allows goes into into place. So that's how we're gonna be looking at this. And I had another thought there, but it it is long gone. But I did hear um in the interest of just summarizing, you know, I've heard two different ideas thrown out there. Um, I've heard. Um, Commissioner Wheatley state of preference for retaining rural conservancy. I have heard other planning commissioners um. Make a a. Argument for all of it being shoreline residential. So I don't know if this is a good time for folks to to. Make motions or vote on that. Um, I'm not sure, but ultimately, you know, um, looking for. Recommendations. I'm not sure if anyone is prepared to do that, or if there are other thoughts before we get there.
I support returning retaining rural conservancies.
Okay.
All right, and I just to reiterate, if you take a look at the criteria, this is not a criteria we establish. This is a criteria that has been established in the shoreline. A management program. And it says predominantly single family or multifamily residential, yes. Majority of lot areas within the shoreline jurisdiction, yes. Ecological functions have been impacted by more intense modification use, yes. And does not meet natural. It might read conservancy. So three and a half of the four criteria meet shoreline residential. Now go to rural conservancy. Look at the criteria there.
I can can we recognize Joel next?
Yes. Joel, do you have a question?
Yeah, I I'd just like to, Andrew, ask you to uh to to explain to me specifically, I I understand the. Um, the existing development that that's there. Uh, but we have this criteria of no net loss. And so if if we were to change the designation from rural conservancy to shoreline uh. Residential, what is the the potential difference in in what would be allowed and the loss that could occur? Because we'll have to make that up somewhere else if if we allow for it here.
And I want to uh clarify that, you know, that calculation has to come from what we what would currently be allowed, right? What what's the current level of development? Uh, and what um potentially the update would allow. So it currently is rural, but as we can see. Um, which, you know, has a fifty foot buffer. As we can see, um, there are some lots on this. In this reach that have not developed at that fifty feet. And again, we can't see everything because of. We're zoomed out. Uh, and also, as Commissioner Carmen alluded to, there may be other factors that prevent people from getting that close to the water, but we're going to have to look at. What is the existing condition on the ground? And if we allow. And, you know, whatever the the master program update and the shoreline environment designation that's assigned here would allow. You know, what is the, what is the impacts associated with that? And um, how are we addressing no net loss if that were to go forward? And there are some ways to look at that. You know, there's ways to do that through through mitigation and through the development regulations and all those sorts of things, but, you know, that that analysis will have to be borne out. Um, once, once we get through the planning commission's recommendation and we've moved in with um, moved on to reviewing with the board of county commissioners.
So what I'm hearing though is that if if we go from rural conservancy to shoreline residential. There there will be a potential for loss, and that that would have to be made up somewhere else. The regulations would allow for further development that is not there now. And that we would have to then find other reaches where we limited development and made up for the. We would have to gain ecological function somewhere else if we allowed for this to be developed uh further.
We would have to demonstrate broadly speaking that that the whole, the whole system is is balanced, but um, so again, we're talking about. The current designation of rural, currently on the ground today, rural versus whether it's shoreline residential or if it's going to be rural conservancy. So that's what we're going to have to. Have to look at.
Okay, uh, Barry, would you continue your thought? And then we have Eric and then Doug.
I just want to point out that it's currently designated shoreline residential. What Andrew is recommending is that it be changed to rural conservancy with one piece. Remaining shoreline residential. The designation of rural as it was in the nineteen ninety plan was shoreline residential. So we're not, if it change stays shoreline residential, we're not changing the SED. Uh, we're not impacting it anymore uh than it was. So, I I mean, that's something that needs to be pointed out that it's not actually changing. It's just the word rural to shoreline residential, and they mean that. Thank you.
Eric.
Uh, I I think Barry kind of hit the point there, but I I just want to make sure that we all understand that. A nineteen ninety rural SED is the equivalent of a twenty twenty two shoreline residential SED. It's not the equivalent of a rural conservancy SED. So the impacts in nineteen ninety rural. Are the equivalent to the impacts of a SED of shoreline residential today.
Uh.
What?
Is that, is that the view of the county?
Commissioner Wheatley, we had Doug in there before you.
Uh, yeah, I'm reinforcing what Eric said, but um, the other part is. Those of you who are new, there are third uh twenty seven hundred and thirteen parcels. That are neg on in the county that are negatively. Impacted by these characterizations. So there is a lot of. Gain already on the books, just. To partially answer your question there, Joel, as far as making up the deficit if we change something.
And uh, I would just tack on to all these thoughts. These are all great thoughts. Um. So again, when we're looking at cumulative impacts, we are, we're not necessarily looking at what the current designation is. We're looking at what is, what are the current? Conditions of the of this reach. What are the ecological functions that exist? And whatever the proposed designation is going to be. You know, at full build out, what would that allow? What impacts would that allow? And if if the answer is there are impacts, you know, then how are we balancing that elsewhere? Or even as part of those development proposals and achieving no net loss? Because if we don't demonstrate that, um, we are not going to have this. It's it is a hell face challenges moving forward through the rest of the review.
Sorry, Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, um, well, again, I I mean, what I was asking was, you know, I I just heard that. That the old designation and and again, you know, I'm not as familiar with the terminology, but I, uh, you know, um, uh. I heard from a fellow commission member that they're the same, that the. Uh, old rural designation is the same as what it would be if it were shoreline residential. Um, so that concerns me. I don't know if that's true or not. I would like to hear from um. From you perhaps as to whether that that they're literally the same or if there's a shade of difference. And then, and then I also want to register again. That when I look at this aerial photo. What I see is something very, a very important ecological feature that I am looking at here. Now, some of us may be more interested in looking at the plating. Um, but I also see that there is an ecological feature there that makes this of particular interest. Not to have further degradation even of the shoreline that is more fully developed. And so, um, and so that is my, that is a concern that I have.
So to your point of uh the relationship between the current and proposed SEDs. Um, as a whole, broadly speaking, um, you know, we can make analogies between them. They are not identical, but they are, there are analogs, right? So the criteria are not the same that let, you know, that would have led to a designation in nineteen ninety and lead to them today. They're they're different. The laws have been changed, the whacks have been updated. Um, but, you know, we can look at what's currently considered rural. Uh, it is most similar to a designation of shoreline residential. So. Um, rural today in the up air, excuse me, in the current SMP is most closely related to uh. To the shoreline residential designation. That holds true in a lot of areas. Uh, specifically, it holds true, I believe, for the marine shoreline. It holds true for lakes. Um, looking at some of our uh. Uh, river and floodplain areas. There are a ton of areas, uh, not a ton, I shouldn't say, but I can think of some. Big examples of areas that are um very actually rural in development. They're they're agricultural. They are floodplain. And they are given a SED of rural. So in many, many places. Uh, and the closest comparison we can make is between the current rural and the proposed shoreline residential, you know. Mileage may vary. Uh, and then that moves through again where we also have this conservancy environment today. Uh, and we have a conservancy environment in the proposal. But again, that's kind of being split out in between rural and urban conservancy. And that's because back when the legislature adopted the most recent. SED system and recommendations, that's what they, that that's how they did that split. Um, and, you know, it just depends on. Are you in an urban area or are you outside of those areas? And then, again, there's a natural today. There's a natural in the update. Are those criteria identically the same? No, they're not. But but, you know, kind of moving from rural to conservancy to natural is 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 similar to going shoreline residential, urban rural. To natural today or in the update. Phew, clear as mud. I know it's it's complicated. Um, but that's the best analogy that I have. Um. And I will return to Chair Simmons to call on folks.
Let's get one more from uh Commissioner Carmen. No.
All right, I forgot to hold my hand down, but I will say something. I I guess. The way I look at this now is I think it ought to all be shoreline residential, but I would like to know more about the. The the creek or the stormwater outfall or whatever this is down here going into this little inlet. Uh, as well as something more about what it looks like on the ground versus an aerial photo photo with a whole bunch of trees.
Thanks.
If I had to make a decision today, I would say shoreline residential.
This, uh, Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, Chair. I um, I think what I'm gathering from what Andrew said uh just now was that. Um, the the existing designation is is almost immaterial. Because what we're looking at, instead of a original blueprint, we're looking at as built. We're looking at what exists on the ground today, and that is the baseline. And if our charge by the state is to have no net loss of of ecological function. If we allow further development under a a shoreline residential designation. That means that somewhere else in the system, we have to take away. Something to gain back ecological function, and that to me sounds like. We're going to start picking winners and losers. You can develop your property further and you have to go backwards somewhere else. And. Um, I'd be uncomfortable. Voting for that, given what I know, the the limited amount I know now, if if we were to. In allow increased development here, we'd have to tell some people somewhere in the county that they have to go back the other direction. Uh, in order to balance it.
Well, all of the, all the reaches have their own independent analysis. Um, and so, and and again, shoreline environment designation is, it's one piece of the known at loss puzzle. Um, one of the most effective ways at demonstrating that known at loss is to get your SEDs. Right, and get them right with with the conditions that are on the ground. And so that was part of this whole process, uh, as I alluded to, when all jurisdictions were required to. So, you know, like I said, ours, ours SMP was in place in nineteen ninety. Uh, it included a SED system. It included mapping. All these shorelines have environment designations today. Um, but part of that update, we had to take another look at them wholesale. So. I don't want to say that it doesn't necessarily matter what it currently is designated, but but part of this process is taking a fresh look and a fresh. Inventory and characterization of the shorelines and then using the the updated system to recommend designations. And in many cases, that may mean the the analogous one still applies, and in other cases it doesn't, you know, there's there's. That portion of this process has um concluded, was done, you know, many years ago. Uh, but, you know, yes, we're taking a fresh, fresh look now, um, you know, post-public hearing at the select ones that. Folks have asked for a new review. I see a lot of hands.
Okay, let's go Commissioner Pestinger, Pestinger, excuse me. And then Commissioner Wheatley and then Commissioner Casino.
I agree with the comments about the no net loss and I've made comments in previous meetings that. It seems that we keep going in the direction of. Of some form of loss of ecological function. In a number of areas, but I have yet to see any area where we're showing any increase in ecological function. Um, I'm also hearing that from a state uh mandate level, we might be moving away from just the concept. we might be moving away from just the concept of no net loss and might be moving to a need for net gain. Um, so we may have to change things dramatically instead of just slightly. Um, but I also want to check in on time. It seems we're going pretty long for this agenda.
Let's do the last two, Commissioner Wheatley and Commissioner Casino, and then we'll have your wrap up, Andrew.
Sorry, um, yeah, I mean, I, I guess when I look at, I mean, I need to learn more about what rural, what went into the, this, the concept of rural conservancy criteria. But again, when I look at the fact that there's a cove there, um, it appears from the aerial that there is potential for actual, uh, conservancy approach to that section. Um, that could have an impact on the ecological value of the section to the, whatever direction that is, the west of it, um, that we're talking about as, as residential now. I mean, we need to be looking at the shoreline as well as the, as the, um, the used part of the property, that's the point of this. And of course, I would be concerned if there were, uh, an undue impact on the current landowners. Um, but it does not appear that a rural conservancy designation would have a significant impact on, um, on the land as it's currently being used and occupied. And, and so therefore, it does not seem to me that since for most of this section, it's, it's ecologically connected, I don't see the sense in pulling that piece out and giving it a different designation than what the totality should be, which is rural conservancy. I mean, the, the most connected, the most ecologically important part from what I can see is that cove, and the part that we're talking about taking out of that designation is immediately adjacent to it. So it stands, it's an area that, that could have potential for some kind of restoration on the shoreline itself, and that's something that we need to think about.
Um, I got a couple of thoughts.
Hang on, Scott, hang on, we're up. Commissioner Casino?
Uh, I, I, I just want to, um, reiterate that I believe that if we do make the shoreline residential, it would not actually impact our no net loss, um, calculations because it is maintaining the status quo. But, um, to Andrew, I was hoping that, I, I think that Commissioner Wheatley is concerned about that. I, I don't know if that is for sure, uh, creek that's going into the cove down there at the bottom or, or what that is. It looks like it very well could be or a draw, but maybe, um, if this comes back before, if she can tell us, protecting that creek is, is a SED change or an SED actually going to be what protects that creek compared to other things, um, within the code? I, I know we have a lot of tools in our box, and SEDs are not always, uh, the most effective in protecting something. But, um, if that really is a creek there, I don't know if, if an SED change would actually do anything or if we would want to, we would actually be relying on like a, um, you know, other building codes that would, uh, protect that particular feature. Thank you.
I'm definitely taking notes and can.
Okay, let's do a quick one from Scott, and then we're gonna let you summarize, Andrew, and then we'll be moving, going to our next.
Now, I'd like to see something that shows us, you know, if we can get it with an overlay of where, where the shoreline residential buffer would be and where the, uh, rural conservancy would be, because I'm, I went to GeoDad and looked this up. And I see very few houses there that I think would be outside of the shoreline residential buffer on the entire parcel. And, you know, the other thing is this map, I don't know, I can't look at it and tell, tell where the high watermark is, which is where we're looking at. So if this is at low tide, then I almost guarantee you that every house along that cove is already well within the designation area for a shoreline residential.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew, let's kind of wrap up, and you've got a lot of work to do here.
Yeah, I think, um, this was good in terms of feedback on additional things that you would like to see. Um, so I've got some notes on that. Um, you know, and again, unfortunately, I have been, I'd love to get on, on a boat and, and go look at all these parcels. Um, but, you know, I'm kind of limited to what we're able to do, um, in the office. Um, but, you know, I can bring back some information. Uh, I will try to use this conversation to sort of fine tune, um, the tools I bring for some of the other reaches that I had lined up. There may be additional, uh, mapping pieces or something that I can bring to try to make it more clear. Um, yeah, but I don't think we're gonna reach a conclusion this evening. So I would, um, conclude there if there are no further questions or remarks.
Okay, Christina, for staff updates, please?
Yeah, so staff had no updates at this time.
Okeydoke. And by the way, Andrew, thank you for getting us through there. We'll be looking forward to hearing for some more about that. Um, we're gonna do calendars now, which is the time that we just kind of check in to see if you'll be unable to attend the next two meetings, and the next one would be February second. Looks like we're all go there, and then after that would be the sixteenth of February. I'm seeing it looks like we're pretty good there. Uh, I just want to say thanks to Eric and Doug for stepping up for the chair and vice chair. Thank you all, the new, our new commissioners, um.
Jerry, excuse me, are we gonna have time to talk about the docket item that, since the, the board of county commissioners will be considering the docket here over the next month?
Let's, I think we should put that, I'm, I'm gonna suggest we put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Christina, does that work for, within the board of county commissioners' schedule for doing the docket? Or do we need to do it now?
So what I can say is that, um, adding any items to the docket were beyond that point. The Board of County Commissioners had a briefing on the preliminary docket, uh, two week ago. Um, and will be providing, um, minor updates to that preliminary docket and in name, naming conventions of the items there on next Tuesday. Um, we're anticipating, um, the board to, uh, provide direction to open up the preliminary docket for the, um, comment period, um, to the public. Typically, we recall, we request the items for the preliminary docket to be provided to staff um, by the fifteenth of November, the year prior to, um, bringing the information to the Board of County Commissioners.
So the answer to my question is, we need to do it now or hold our peace, right? Or wait till next year?
I can bring an item to the county manager for the board to potentially consider. However, we are beyond our traditional period of adding any items to the docket.
So Christina, could you just bring this up to the county manager as, as far as having a member of the planning commission attend certain meetings?
Yep.
And then let's just do that and see where we stand on that.
Um, Jim? Yes, I think that we need to ask that that goes to the board of county commissioners. Okay, not the county manager.
I'll ask the county manager to add, to provide, ask that question to the.
Commissioners are the ones that appoint us.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Eric, you got, looks like you got a question?
Well, I guess I'm confused because it sound like that we're just talking about two issues. Or one of them is Doug wanting to have a review of the Drainage Design Erosion Control Manual placed on the docket, and the other issue is about, uh, planning commission presentations to the BOCC. So I'm not sure which of those issues is being contemplated right now.
Okay, I, I apologize. I, I just thought we were discussing, uh, having a planning commission member attend board meetings.
Doug, was your concern about the Drainage Design and Erosion Control Manual update or review?
Yes.
Sorry, I apologize.
So my question would be, I don't think that's a docket item.
That is correct. The DDECM is not an item that needs to be docketed and is currently being updated, um, by Public Works.
Will we see it then?
No, because it is not an item that needs to come through the planning commission.
Any other thoughts that we need to kind of? Thank you, new commissioners. Glad to have you aboard. Great. Go ahead, Eric.
No, thank you, Jim, for, for this year.
Hey, thank you for stepping up, my friend. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.